You do too, and we thank you for putting us in a position of leadership. And pray that we will take these roles seriously and humbly and that we will lead in a way that is pleasing to you. We pray tonight for Brandon's mom as she is recovering from surgery. That you will give her strength and good health. And pray for him as he takes care of her. We pray for the others related to those of us who are present, who may be struggling with some things. We pray for them too. And even those who might be with us who are dealing with their own situations, pray for them. Give them comfort, give them strength. And we just pray that as we continue to lead our town, give us wisdom in our decisions in Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. We thank you for being here tonight. And as always, our public comment period is we'll allow you three minutes to speak about any topic you would like. And we ask you to fill out a form, give it to our clerk. And when you come forward, please state your name and address. One that would like to speak at this time. Come on forward. We even gave you a middle row, center aisle. We're not used to that.
Hi, my name's Lisa Landsberg. I've been a Tyrone resident for three years. I brought some notes because I'm a little nervous. And this is my first meeting. So we moved here because of the golf cart actually aspect, that was a huge deal for us. So that's probably like our two main destinations. And I understand Peachtree City is being addressed. Getting to downtown though is tricky for us because we have to go. The path is about two feet from the town. People are flying down. Power, there's no speed. You know, dials that tell you how fast you're going. It's just way too fast to be that close to a golf cart path without a curb or a guardrail or more. But.
You have a minute and forty-five seconds left.
Oh, perfect.
You're in good shape.
So I'm super appreciative of our residents. And I love the businesses that. So I don't want to add undue burden, but. About that, and I was just. Play is for business. Or is not.
Thank you, thank you. You've got another minute if you need it. All right, anyone else? And on that golf cart topic, I think we'd like to have a conversation after the meeting. Phillip is prepared to discuss that topic as we have done in the past. We've got a little bit more information. So anybody who wants to talk about that after the meeting can. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Phillip, I assume that you are going to be carrying the torch on anything that reads Brandon on the. Started with the revisions to the designs of multi-use paths.
See what we've got pulled up here. So the town has two active multi-use path projects. Right now, we have Laurelwood and East Crestwood Road. Laurelwood is in property acquisition. East Crestwood is about to be in property acquisition. And there was some discussion regarding path width. Both projects are fully within the town's right-of-way, but Laurelwood Path is a proposed path of twelve feet wide. The Crestwood Road Path is a proposed path that is ten feet wide. Some residents from Briarwood Road regarding the Laurelwood Path spoke at the August 7th meeting during public comments about concerns regarding the width of the path. And there was some council direction for us to address this at a future meeting, which we've brought before you this evening. So we are open to discussion and direction from council on path width. We can start with Laurelwood Path because that is the one that is twelve feet and is kind of the main point of discussion. If we want to have a further discussion about Castlewood Road, I'm sorry, not Castlewood, Crestwood, East Crestwood Road, we can as well, but that path is ten feet, not twelve feet. And this is the Laurelwood Path section. So it's Laurelwood Drive runs along Briarwood Road and connects with an RFB crossing back onto Laurelwood where it becomes an unpaved gravel road. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Okay.
Kind of stopped.
Any comments?
Well, I would like to jump in because I had an opportunity to get out and take a look at this proposed path area. And I did a little bit of personal research on this topic. Phillip, I sent you some pictures, would you be able to share?
Yes, sir.
Go back to the first picture. There we go, right there, okay. So this particular path is in my neighborhood. It's in Lake Windsaw. This is an eight-foot path. And as you can see, like anybody, if I'm driving on this path, people are standing in the grass. There are people that jog on this path, other golf carts that are coming up this blind hill. And if you're at a certain part, you're riding in someone's grass. And it's, I don't think that at that particular size, any golf cart path would be appropriate for eight feet. So I wanted to see what a ten-foot path would look like. And this is a ten-foot path, and this is on East Crestwood, directly across from Crestwood Baptist Church. You may have may notice it. And so my golf cart is kind of in about two-thirds of the path. But if there was another pedestrian or golf cart, you would see some of the same types of issues. Like even if you could fit right next to that golf cart, you would probably feel a little uncomfortable riding at any consistent speed or walking. And if you're walking your dog, you're definitely going to pull over in the grass too. So, you know, I think if we are talking about ten-foot paths, I think we need to keep this in mind. I also have an older golf cart, and some of the newer golf carts are much larger than mine. So can we go to the next picture, Phillip? All right, so this is right outside of Town Hall. This is a ten, this is a twelve-foot path. And that's a new golf cart to the right, and my golf cart is to the left. And with just about six to eight inches on the side, you can kind of comfortably pass in the golf cart. I feel like a pedestrian would feel safe if they were walking next to a golf cart on the same path. And I know that our path is proposed to be twelve feet. And so I wanted to kind of see what that difference would look like, and I wanted to provide it for reference. So if you go to the next picture, this is the ten-foot path right in front of the door outside. So when you step outside and you take a look at that, that's what a regular-sized golf cart looks like. And then I would have to put one wheel on the grass next to it. So I feel like that some of the neighbors that would have a twelve-foot path in front of their house, they would be calling, complaining about the rutting in the grass on their property due to that potential issue. And I don't think that would be appropriate for us to try to engage in when we could make sure that that was resolved initially. So going on-site, that was the other part. So being on-site to our citizen, Ms. Lisa, is that correct? To your point, you talked about the narrow strip of grass between a roadway and the cart path, and how that made you feel unsafe. The beauty of this design is that it puts, I want to say was either five and a half foot or a six and a half foot, six and a half foot space, grass space between the road and the beginning of the path. So you would feel a little distanced away from, yeah, right in there, from traffic. And then the path is right above it. And so you wouldn't feel like if you were driving on a smaller path, you would not feel as if you needed to pull into the grass on the right-of-way close to traffic or the grass on a property owner's property. And so just looking at that and thinking about the future needs for Tyrone, I know we've talked about connecting Tyrone in a variety of ways. And one of the things that it's on our wish list for accomplishing in the future is making sure that our kids can maybe drive their golf carts to Sandy Creek High School, which would be pretty awesome if we can establish some of that connectivity. And so right now, this path would open up over three hundred people in that area that currently would have to take either a smaller path or the street access and moving, and that traffic moving so fast, that I would feel a little bit more comfortable in knowing that the appropriate-sized path going through, kids that just got their permits, would be able to drive safely on the path to be able to get to where they needed to go. And so I just, I would say I would encourage people to consider what the future holds for Tyrone and being as safe as possible on our paths.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Hunter makes a lot of good points there, and I understand what he's saying. These two particular areas that we're talking about, I don't perceive that there's going to be a tremendous amount of traffic. And I don't know how anybody can possibly tell. We don't have three hundred people in that area that are going to have golf carts to start with. If you get down on East Crestwood, East Crestwood is a very rural road. They, you know, they don't have any sidewalks, they don't have anything there but just a ditch, which obviously we're going to be paving that road, as well as putting in a golf cart path there as well. I don't suspect that the twelve feet, eight feet is probably a little bit, it's too narrow, and I'll openly admit to that. But I think going to a ten-foot width is certainly, in these two particular areas, would be, are going to work out just fine for the amount of traffic that we have. We just built a golf cart path on Tyrone Road, and there's no road in Tyrone that rides trucks or cars any faster than they do there. And that golf cart path is only ten feet. And we seem to be doing fine there. There has not been any problems. I've got a guy that lives on the corner there of Brookfield that's got the world's nicest golf grass, and there has not been any issues. I think that we can reduce it from twelve to ten, and I think that would be more. And I think that would be more convenient or more considerate of our residents in town and taking a little bit less property that they're used to from them. I would like to see, I would like to see these two particular areas to go from twelve to ten feet and not keep it at twelve feet.
Am I allowed? Okay, I appreciate what Councilman Billy has said there. One of the things that makes this process so simple is that we're not taking anyone's property. This is in the right-of-way. So we're not taking anything from anybody. This is public land. And also, our citizens voted for this because this is being paid for by Splos, and we list all of our projects. So in changing or trying to change what we propose to do to our citizens already who understand what we're trying to accomplish, it's almost as if we are undermining their vote because they voted and they chose this path. And I think that we should be good stewards of those concerns. Also, I do understand that ten feet is a respectable size. But that's why I wanted to put those pictures up, so that people could actually see what that actually was in real space. Because the difference between ten feet and twelve feet in your mind seems a lot smaller than it actually is in space. And sometimes you just need to see that to understand that. So I just wanted to address what Mr.. Oh, and then, and by the way, can I ask staff, how many houses and people are in that particular area? Which street? This is the Laurelwood Path.
So Laurelwood, Laurelwood has approximately a hundred and fifty households based on the average household size for the town. That's a little over three hundred and thirty people. Three hundred and thirty residents, a hundred and fifty or so households.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a couple of comments. I do understand a lot of both of your concerns. What I'd like to say is, I completely agree with the twelve-foot golf cart path or multi-use path where appropriate. However, there are places where they're just not appropriate, in my opinion, like Laurelwood. I think ten-foot would be sufficient there. I did speak with a council member in Peachtree City, and that person let me know that typically there's our ten-foot. And that's what they do, ten-foot. I do remember that you mentioned there is a county desire to have a twelve-foot. And again, I would like to see that where appropriate, like by the schools where we have new drivers, when we can get that, you know, that on the wish list checked off. But in the meantime, I think ten-foot would be appropriate on Laurelwood and Castlewood. I mean, not Castlewood, Crestwood, sorry. The comments got me thinking on the wrong road. And another thing is, golf carts are designed to drive on grass. So if you have to pull aside and let someone go by, I don't see that you would repetitiously stop at the same exact spot over and over again enough to cause a rut or damage to. It could be possible. I'm just saying it's not probable, in my opinion, that it would happen enough. And if it were to happen, a golf cart, they ride on million-dollar golf carts courses around the world. So hopefully, you know, they're not got on street tires and they're tearing up people's lawns, what they perceive as their lawn. And that's a big thing, is perception, is a lot of these people have never had sidewalks, they've never had a golf cart path or a multi-use path there. So it is in their mind a taking, even though legally it's not a taking. So I would like to diminish that and appease the two peoples in particular that were concerned about the perception in their mind of a taking. And even going forward, where other people's perceptions, I would like to always consider that perception of that person's property, even though legally it might be ours. At some point, if there is, you know, a population growth in that neighborhood, and we see there is a need to put in a twelve-foot, at that time, we could reallocate funds to go there. But also, in keeping it in a ten-foot, we're going to save money and possibly it could be redirected to improvements on Castlewood.
Can you go to the slide that has the full path, full section? It's Briarwood is busier and would contain more pedestrians, bikes, pads, or carts. Can we do ten-foot on the Laurelwood sections and twelve-feet on the Briarwood section?
You can do whatever you want, sir.
That is an option.
Certainly.
Well, my only, well, my main concern, my main concern is that we don't fall into a trap of going ten-foot often. Because all of the cities and the county are going to start moving to twelve-foot. I know that for a fact. So what they do now is definitely, that's the truth, that they have been doing ten historically, so have we. But we are all going to strive to go to twelve moving forward. And I don't want us to get into a habit of doing this too often, going to ten-foot too often. It's, I want to, you know, we've, the five of us have sat up here and said, and how many times on other projects, if we're going to do something, let's do it right. You know, we say that often to you all. And why would we say that about other projects but not on this? And so I just encourage, whatever you all decide tonight, I suspect you all will make the decision. I just plead with you to, let's not fall into the habit of doing ten feet every time.
One other, one other thing. I had an opportunity also to drive on some of the Peachtree City paths that are ten feet. One of the advantages that those path systems have is it's cut in there in the right-of-way. That's usually a wooded area. And so when you have a ten-foot wide path in a wooded area that also has some setbacks cut in, so you don't have trees and stuff protruding and roots popping up the path, you can still pull safely around in the pond straw and not have any issues as well. So, you know, just to kind of keep that in mind, that our paths don't exist in those conditions. They exist in different conditions, so.
Phillip, on Laurelwood Drive, where it begins, where the cart path begins, is there going to be a curb cut?
Yes, ma'am. That, this, this right here is basically a small curb cut. And it's the same width as the path, twelve feet. What you see there is the tactile strip that we put for pedestrians.
Just to be clear, the little section there on Laurelwood, we had to reduce to ten feet because of the right-of-way taking. So, and to get that, that cut in there. So that first twenty feet then expands into the twelve.
Yeah, so, okay, so this is, this is ten feet right in this section right here. It is not currently twelve?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, well, in typical Eric fashion, I'm trying to reach a compromise, but y'all do what you want.
And to your point, ma'am, this, we are talking specifically these two particular areas. And the people here, obviously, on Laurelwood have given their thoughts that they don't want it twelve feet. So whether they voted for it or not, and I would like to know if we've even questioned the people on East Crestwood, whether that's what they would like, or, you know, not that they have much choice if we decide to do it. But I don't think they've even been questioned on it, whether they, whether they would consider a twelve-foot or a ten-foot on there. But in these two particular locations, I certainly would like to see it stay at ten feet and not twelve.
Just for a point of clarification, I imagine we know the answer to this. So this being the, this being the typical section, the cross-section of the path, on the left side of this image are going to be the homes. So under the current design, whoop, hold on, let me see. Twelve-foot cross-section, here's the twelve-foot cross-section. So under the current design, you've got, moving from the houses to the road, you've got a three-foot reserve strip that's going to be graded and grassed. You've got your twelve-foot path, a six-and-a-half-foot grass strip between the road. If a reduction were to happen, I'm assuming that reduction would be on the far-left side, that three-foot reserve strip would go to a five-foot reserve strip. Not, we're not pushing the path towards the road. Or we're not taking that six-and-a-half-foot grass strip and making it an additional two feet to an eight-and-a-half-foot.
Important clarification. Where are you, where are you buying your two feet from? What is council intending? When you say ten feet instead of twelve feet, are you buying, buying one foot on either side? Are you buying two feet from the house side or two feet from the street? Because some would argue they want to be farther away from the street.
And just to be clear, this will not actually change our temporary construction easement acquisition. This is, you know.
Which you had mentioned the other day. But we would still be occupying the same exact space that we would be occupying whether we were doing a twelve-foot space or a ten-foot space. The only difference is that we have a few homeowners who think that the twelve-foot is too large versus ten feet.
And the twelve-foot wide, in my understanding, is the same as your driveway, is that correct?
It's similar to a driveway.
Typically, you have a twelve-foot driveway, so it's like having a driveway in your front yard to get the visual image as well. I'm for the ten-foot on this, and I would suggest taking one foot on each side. That's my preference.
That's very possible, sir.
Well, I guess somebody can make a motion unless somebody has more comments.
Can I ask, is the town going to maintain the grass from this cart path to the road?
We can. If the owner wishes to maintain it, they can. If it is maintained by us, it'll be on whatever our cutting schedule is for Briarwood Road. If the owners want to cut more frequently than that, then they can cut it as well. But it will be, if they decide not to do that, it will be on the town's cutting schedule per our mowing contract with AAB. I believe Briarwood Road, Scott, sections of Briarwood Road that we do cut, is it bi-weekly? Bi-weekly, bi-weekly.
More like once every two months.
Uh, oh, wow.
Sorry.
Okay. We can, we can double-check on them.
Well, I make a motion that we, we make on these two locations, on Laurelwood and on East Crestwood, that the cart paths will be ten feet wide.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yea, no.
All right.
And just a clarification, one foot subtraction on either side of where we have reserved strips.
So you'll have a five-foot grass strip?
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute.
No. He was seven, seven, six.
Yeah, seven and a half and four. Yes, yeah, I'm sorry about that, yes.
All right. Town sign ordinance.
So the second item before you is a discussion regarding the Town of Tyrone sign ordinance. At the August 7th council meeting, there were some comments about the ordinance with particular interest regarding digital displays and internally illuminated signage. So staff has prepared the town sign ordinance and highlighted areas where the current language addresses these items. Currently, the town's ordinance does not allow digital displays or any internally illuminated signage. You will see some internally illuminated signage around town, and that's likely because it's grandfathered in prior to this ordinance, which was enacted, I believe, in '07. So it wasn't, it's not, it's, it's, it's not too far in the past, but it's been some time. If council wishes to explore an expansion of these permissions, I am prepared to take direction from you on that. I would also like to bring up two other items since we'll be toying with this ordinance potentially. Some supplemental discussion regarding billboards and murals, there has been a discussion of murals. Both have been, billboards has a discrepancy that we would like resolved, and murals has been a point of conversation, and just wanted to give an opportunity for y'all to discuss that and give direction. I will note on billboards, one of the issues with the ordinance currently is that it has an explicit prohibition of billboards, which is a legal challenge for us. What we'd like to do is remove this explicit reference to billboards not being allowed, and instead have billboards be classified as freestanding signs, and they just have to abide by our size limitations that we already have for freestanding signs. So that's what we would like to do with billboards, just so you're clear on that. If you have any questions, you can.
Now, we've had discussions about murals in the past, but they're based, they're not for advertisement. We were just going to be putting them up as something of a, you know, for instance, the restrooms over in Shamrock Park, we had talked about placing a mural of something, something that's aesthetically pleasing to people and not offensive and, you know, not socially unacceptable. But as far as using that murals for any kind of advertisement of any kind, I don't ever remember that discussion.
No, this is, this is just an opportunity to have discussion. If we're talking about murals on town property, it won't really apply because this is, this is a discussion about our ordinance as it pertains to others. We're exempt from that ordinance. So if we decide to put forward or you want to request a mural to be put on town property, we would, we would, that would be a separate item. There was some discussion about whether or not murals, generally speaking, on private property would be allowed. They're currently prohibited. But if you, if, if the idea is to continue to leave them as prohibited, that's perfectly fine. I just knew that was a topic of discussion in the past and wanted to give an opportunity for y'all to direct us if there was any change you wanted to make.
I, I think we're getting into a real slippery slope when we start agreeing to or thinking about digital displays or billboards of any kind. I'm, I'm not in favor of having either of those introduced into our sign ordinance, and I'd like to keep them out.
The request that was made was, I'm pretty sure I'm at liberty to say, that Legacy Theater, which is a very prominent regional attraction, wanted something similar to what we have out front. And right now, we just don't allow it. And so I promised that I would introduce it for discussion. And I, I don't know what that opens the door to. If you allow something like what we have, what other things does that open the door to? Like, like, it's one of those things where if you change the zoning on something for one use and then you get, you know, 25 other uses that you don't like. But what kind of signs might come with, with, if we did allow something that looked like what we have?
Yeah, so, digital displays, it's my understanding, and I can let Dennis chime in on this, but digital displays would fall into the broader category of internally illuminated signs based on contexts that we've, we've kind of understood in the past. So if digital displays are allowed, it would, it would likely be staff's recommendation that we remove the prohibition on internally illuminated signs. The, the, the reason for a prohibition on internally illuminated signs is for consistency of signage. It's, it's just a control mechanism. Because if you have internally illuminated signs, you then get signs of multiple different colors and things like that, and that are highlighted particularly at, at night, or that are much more visible or things like that. So of course, business owners typically like internal illumination because it is, it's more eye-catching and it creates a diversity of signage. So from a business owner perspective, it's typically more desirable to have internal illumination. From a architectural kind of consistency or style perspective, usually exterior illumination creates a little bit more consistency. Although they can have multiple colored signs, they're not internally lit, so the lighting is just more consistent across the board. So that's, that's kind of the layout. But many cities, you know, allow internal illumination. It just, it just depends on preference, really.
Why do you have to group digital display and internally illuminated together? They're not, to me, they're not necessarily the same thing.
Digital displays by definition are going to be most likely light emitting diodes, LED displays, some type of illumination internally in the sign. It's difficult to tell someone, you can have this type of illumination internally, but generally, this type of illumination internally is not going to be allowed. It's the same type of an issue. It's an internal illumination. You're also going to look at the issue of, yes, it might be attention-getting. That's the good thing as far as the business is, but it's the bad thing as well as far as the business is because if it's too attention-getting, it becomes a traffic safety hazard. And there are regulations on internal displays like that that regulate the length of time a message has to stay up so that people aren't driving by looking at it, you know, four or five times because there are four or five different messages, and all of a sudden, they lose track of what they're doing. So if you bring this into the equation, you've got to look at aspects such as, how, how long can a message stay up? How fast can it go? But you are looking at internal illumination, and it's difficult to say it's okay for this type of internal illumination, but this type is bad. If you're going to allow one, you're going to allow them all. But you can regulate it. It's not, you're not, you've gone from prohibiting it to saying, I'm going to regulate it. So regulate it for what it is and make sure that it's consistent with public safety.
Well, just to voice my opinion, I'll just say, I think we need to address allowing digital displays that are regulated for the sake of safety.
Yeah, absolutely.
We haven't had any accidents out here because of the sign.
No, and it's because we comply with the frequency of messaging, things like that. And that's true, and, you know, digital deals, billboards, you know, they, they have to apply by that, you know, you see that. So any kind of allowance of digital displays, that would be part of the ordinance if, if you were to move in that direction. Any, there can be certain, certain types of regulation on internal illumination if you wanted extra controls, particularly if you wanted to allow internal illumination but only maybe certain color gradients or styles or things like that. This display only displays a single color, it's red. You might be able to do something similar. But if you allow it, it has to be universal across the board. So across all internal illuminated signs.
Philip, I have a quick question about that. So let's say someone comes in, it's a developer, and they want to build a building and they want a digital sign. Who would, who would see that to approve it prior to, you know, that process? It would be planning commission?
It depends on what stage. If it's a new building and they're putting a brand-new monument sign on Highway 74 or in downtown, planning commission, that would be part of their architectural review, and they would approve those types of signs. And then staff would issue a permit when they were ready to construct it. If it's not in one of those districts or it's a pre-existing business that's building a new sign or something like that, then staff would, staff would go through that entire process with them.
So it wouldn't come to us at all?
That is correct. Not, not, not currently.
But we'd be establishing the ordinance, so.
That is correct.
It comes to us once and for all. And I, for, for the record, I definitely think it should be one color, not in double, multi-color stuff.
Yeah, I, I agree in that sense that the neon sign, the neon lights are going to be very distracting. This out here, you know, it's just that one red and we're just, you're not flashing anything, it's just changing. But I don't think of a place like Legacy Theater is, would, would benefit from just having something like that. They're looking for something that pops, you know, that people are gonna, you know, notice.
I think she sent me a picture of what she was talking about, just so we could have an idea.
We, we have, I mean, in terms of what you could anticipate if we allowed digital displays, we've had a lot of inquiries about them. Typically, it's going to be an assembly use, so.
What does that mean?
Ninety percent of them have been churches that have asked for them. The Legacy Theater is an assembly use, we've seen that. The new owners of Glendalo Manor have inquired about it. So these type of assembly uses, the Tyrone Depot, things like that, because they have either a series of events or they have advertisement for things like that, that's what we see as most common in terms of those requests.
Who is responsible for enforcement? Obviously, we had a concerned citizen talking about enforcement of our current signage that is around town that seems to be in disrepair. Or does that fall under code enforcement? And, and would this fall in, and would they be following up to make sure the frequency was correct? The messaging was properly scrolling or however, or if it's flashing? That would be code enforcement?
Yes, code enforcement would be over, you know, regulating the condition of signs if our, depending on the scope of what our ordinance has for conditions, as well as if a sign was, was not otherwise complying with our ordinance.
I, I'm for exterior lighting. I think the aesthetic of the town overall, my opinion, is a country town. People moved here, saw time and time again when we were working on the comprehensive plan. People liked the country setting, the pastoral views. I know some of that will change with development, but I think keeping the lighting external will help promote that small-town feel. That's my opinion.
Philip, you were saying that the primary people that would actually use this are people that have businesses that are in that assembly use space. It's that, I know that goes across zoning classifications, so I'm, I'm asking this question. Is, would there be some type of condition placed among various zoning classifications to say if you're an assembly?
No, I mean, signage is regulated in one of two ways. It's residential and non-residential. So really, it's not, it's not about zoning per se, it's about use, land use as a general kind of classification. So if it's a non-residential use, it applies, the zoning, or the sign ordinance applies a particular way. If it's a residential use, it, there's another division for that. So we wouldn't really be able to, I think, craft any kind of separation between zoning uses just between residential and non-residential. But yeah, the, the, the users that we've had request for this the most have been assembly uses and, and properties on Highway 74. So like Tent World and other places like that that have frontage on a major state route, they've, they've inquired about digital displays there, too.
All right. Any else?
I have one more question, back to the billboard. I know we have at least two, what I would call, billboards in Tyrone. The one I believe is up by Kirkley Road, and then there's the one down by the Cabinet Place on Sonoya Road.
Yes, ma'am.
Those are the only two I'm aware of. I know that you said we couldn't be exclusive, but I don't particularly care for those. So is our current ordinance even smaller than those? And I, because I can't imagine if we allow that signage, if that's currently allowed and it can light up internally.
That's grandfathered, I think.
Those, those two billboards would be grandfathered in. What we're, what we're, what we would do in terms of removing a explicit prohibition of billboards in the ordinance is not necessarily allowing them per se in the form that you see. It's just that they are by a more general category, they're a freestanding sign. Freestanding signs have size limitations that we put on them. They're usually approximately 70 square feet or so. So billboards would, if somebody came in and they said, I want to put in a billboard, I would not classify it as a billboard. It's a freestanding sign, and we would say, okay, these are the size limitations that you would abide by.
That's where regulation comes in.
Yes, sir.
By size and color and.
Yeah, architectural style, things like that. Existing signage that is, that, that came before, it would, it would be grandfathered in, it would stay. And that goes for illumination. We also have a couple of signs in town that are internally illuminated that are not supposed to be, and they are active code enforcement violations.
What are you seeking tonight? Direction to do blank?
Direction, if, if council has a direction to prepare anything in regards to internal illumination, if there is no direction to prepare internal illumination with, I, I would bring the billboard situation before you. My impression is that we are not, we're not, not discussing a permission of murals outside of what the town would do, so that's outside of the ordinance, and.
Let me ask, I do have a question about that because you have mentioned before that Brooks, they, they've had murals in their downtown area, they had a local artist paint those murals, and these are individual businesses, it's not the town that commissioned this? Is that correct, or is this town that commissioned it?
No, I believe the town of Brooks commissioned those paintings.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, so if I, if, if I own Partners Pizza in town and I had a wall and I wanted to, to do a mural of a slice of pepperoni pizza and a, you know, or something like that, as a private business owner, currently, I wouldn't be able to do like anything like that. But if the town had a wall and they wanted to do a mural on their wall, we can do it if, if.
Yeah, town property, y'all have the right to, to, first, if you want to direct us to, to bring forward some options for murals on town property, then that's outside of what the ordinance is covering, that's something separate. I, I will note, it is maybe a small exception because we had some, some conversation about this, not necessarily with council, but with business owners. If you have a, if you have a building that's fronting the road and you're allowed a wall sign fronting the road, and you want to paint your sign onto your building, we don't really have a prohibition on that type of material, exact construction materials. So in theory, you could create a, you could paint a sign on the front of your building as long as it complied with all the wall sign dimensions that we have, things like that. So in some way, you could consider that a mural. But really, it's a wall sign that complies with all regulations of wall signs. It just happens to be painted as opposed to constructed.
Yeah, now, if, if someone, if we, if that was allowed, how would that be regulated? Because like, to Billy Campbell's point, right now, he said that it could be a slippery slope. If you allow this, then it could be anything. So how would that be prevented?
So it's the same, it's the same exact qualifications for regulation of signage content, which is very minimal. We can't really regulate signage content except for explicit or obscene items that's covered in state law in terms of that. So it would apply in the same context that a wall sign would. We're limiting the size, we're limiting the dimensions, things like that. So it has to comply with all of those same regulations. And so that concern would, I guess, follow through with any wall sign that somebody wanted to put up as well.
Okay.
A few years ago, we had a restaurant here in town that asked to put a mural on the side of their building, and we had to tell them no, they were not happy. They've put some other decor on the side of their building since then. That's an example of how a mural would have been painted. And I'm sure it would have been artistic and, and in some people's views, very, very pretty, but we, it was not allowed in our ordinance.
Okay. So my, my understanding is we're not going to touch murals as it's written in the ordinance. If council decides to pursue something on public property, we'll do that separately, but that's not an ordinance item.
Okay, let me ask, council, does anybody want to touch that issue?
Nope.
Heard two people say it. All right. Council, does anybody want to direct staff to provide options on internal, regulated, regulated internal illumination? Or through?
No.
Okay.
I'm indifferent.
And if, if it's okay with you, because I, I would recommend us address the billboard situation, I will bring that back to you at another time.
All right, Scott, you're next.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
The first thing I have on the agenda for you tonight is the Shamrock Lake Dam Outlet Pipe Replacement Project. That's Project PW 2024-11. And we're, the consideration tonight is to award to Limb... And we're, the consideration tonight is to award to limitless concrete in the amount of $298,225. In budget meetings and FY26, for the FY26 budget, staff included funding requests to perform the repairs and make improvements to the spillway system. Nine bids were received on June 17th of 2025, and the low bidder was limited concrete at $298,225. Please be aware that some trees may have to be removed to complete the work, but please also note that this is a separate project from the future tree removal project on the dam. Funding for this is out of general fund and SPOSS. The general fund is 140541409, and the 2023 SPOSS fund is 3224954.1422. Staff requests council to award the Shamrock Lake Dam Outlet Pipe Replacement Project number PW 2024-11 to limitless, limitless concrete for the total amount of $298 and That's 298225. Attached were some bids for the bid tabulation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions?
Scott, we didn't receive, I mean, we, we always receive a full detail in, you know, how things are being designed and built. We didn't receive anything for this. I haven't, I mean, I'd, I'd really like to see how this thing is gonna be presented or be built into the, into that area over there. Do we have anything?
We do have a set of plans on these. I'd have to go back and look. I, I thought maybe we had brought this one, but perhaps we have not. But I thought we did. I'll be glad to.
When was that? When would that have been?
Several months ago.
I, I do believe that we brought the designs for this plan before council, if I remember correctly.
I don't, I myself don't remember seeing him.
I, I believe so, but I, I could be wrong about that. I apologize. We, we have a couple of dam projects.
There's so many of them now, I can't keep them all straight.
Sorry. Earth and embankment projects with concrete.
Basically, to describe what's happening, right now, we have a 36-inch pipe that goes under the, the cart path. There's going to be another 36-inch pipe that will be added to get the flows and stuff that we need in order to sustain the flows for the dam. Then those will go back and combine into 148-inch pipe. The reason why we don't use a 148-inch pipe up at, up at the dam itself is because it would make a rise in the path in order to get enough cover over the pipe. So that's why we're using the 236s and then joining them into a 48. And that 48 will go back behind the back of the dam and discharge down where the discharge is basically for going under the railroad system. The top of it will still have a small ditch line on it, but that will only be taking water that's coming off of the top of the surfaces around there that's naturally draining. So it's taking out that large amount of water that's coming through, and this is to help protect the back of the dam from scouring under large storms. We've already seen a little bit of erosion occurring back there now, and that's the purpose why we're doing this. And it appears, as far as the trees go, it could be none, or it could be up to as many as five, but I'm thinking that if we do what we think is going to play out back there, it, it may not even be any. And so those pipes, as they come along, will actually put more soil back there on top because that gets very deep back there, that, that, the ditch basically running back there currently.
So the, the general flow of the water is going to be exactly like it is now, except now we're just going to be increasing the size of the pipe to allow more water to flow?
It's going to go, right now, it goes under the, the 36-inch goes under the path, but then it goes in straight into a ditch.
Okay, but now you're going to have a closed pipe that's going to do all that?
It's going to take it all the way down there, and it's going to stop any erosion from all that water coming out of the back, coming out of the, the lake. The upper ditch will also be protected with riprap. So the normal water that comes that pathway will?
Now, Scott, the lake will have to be slightly drained, and the path would have to be cut, correct?
That's correct. And the path will be closed during some sections when we're actually working underneath the, you know, those two pipes going underneath the, the path. But of course, we, we'll strive to minimize all that disturbance and allow people to use it as much as possible.
Right. And this 298,225 is within budget?
Yes, ma'am.
What had, do you remember the? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jessica, pardon me. Did that include engineering, or is that just for that? Just for the, the installation of the outlet pipe replacement?
Right, so this amount is actually for the installation, it's the construction part of it. Engineering is a separate contract.
I was gonna ask, do you remember what number we had allowed for that? I mean, is this like under budget? Is my hope, since we're possibly having?
It is, it is under budget.
Okay, great.
Not by a lot, but it's under budget.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, I see you're trying to do that, thank you. Thought you were getting close.
Going back to March, but?
I don't ever remember seeing it myself, but?
Multitasking, okay.
Let me see if we took any moments.
I'll make a motion. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to award the Shamrock Lake Dam Outlet Pipe Replacement Project number PW 2024-11 to limitless concrete in the amount of $298,225.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right, so the next project here is, or thing on the agenda is consideration to award the Public Works trailer to Big Tex Trailer World in McDonough, Georgia, in the amount of $18,249 for a Big Tex 22PH Pentel 25-foot trailer. The council approved the budget for amount of $25,000 for the 25-foot trailer. The maintenance supervisor had requested that budget based on some information he had obtained when he was looking at one of his trailers of choice, which is the Big Tex trailer. This proposed new trailer is within our budget. According to the paperwork from the vendor, the Big Tex 228, 22PH trailer has a gross vehicle weight rating of 23,900 pounds and a cargo carrying capacity of 17,800 pounds, which is sufficient to carry our compact track loader, including the attachment. General fund is the funding source for this. It's number 140542201, and staff requests awarding the Public Works 25-foot trailer purchase to Big Tex Trailer World of McDonough, Georgia for the total of $18,249.
Any questions about the trailer? Like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the Public Works trailer to Big Tex Trailer World in McDonough, Georgia in the amount of $18,249 for a Big Tex 22PH Pentel 25-foot trailer.
Second.
We have a motion, a couple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. No, no, that was.
Was that?
That was a lay, aye, yeah, in favor.
All in favor? Okay. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Move forward. Another public comment period, and we welcome you to come forward at the time, this time, if you desire. So same rules apply. Are there any staff comments? Yes, ma'am.
Qualifying ended yesterday, and we have incumbent Billy Campbell qualified for his post, and Ms. Maureen Wheeler qualified for council post four. The election will be held on November 4th, and the deadline to register to vote is on October 6th. And I'd also like to give a shout out to Assistant Town Clerk Sierra Willis. She had a shout out from a new business owner this week. He said that she gave exceptional customer service, and he wanted to let everybody know that.
Good. Thank you. Congratulations to Councilman Campbell and Councilwoman-elect Wheeler. She is, she has a family birthday tonight, I hear, so she's out of pocket, but I've congratulated her. And bad news to all this is, we only have a few months left, Ms. Fur.
Twenty years is a long time, folks. Thank you. I done got old.
All right, any other staff comments? None. Any executive or council comments?
I have one. I was with Scott Langford when a citizen came to us with a concern. He said that he listens from home, and when people come up to the mic stand, he, he just requested people speak directly into the mic because he could hardly hear them at home. And I told him I would bring those comments tonight.
That's a mic problem. We got to do something about the sound system, because people are talking into the mic, as are we. So clearly, that's a sound system issue. I don't know what the problem is with capturing people's voices, but I don't know, we hear that all the time. People who go or watch the live stream and say they can't hear it.
I've called ASW, they're Atlanta Soundworks, they're the ones that we've been using for AV. So they're going to come take a look and see if they can do some modifications. Part of the issue is that they're noise-canceling microphones, and I think that they just work a little too, a little too good on the noise cancellation side of things. It's supposed to, it's supposed to keep out ambient noise, but it, it kind of keeps out a lot of direct noise too. So we're going to have them do some adjustments if they can, or, you know, let us know what, what our options are. But they, they have been called.
Any, any other council comments? All right, I'm sorry that I have to address this topic again. It is, it has become the bane of my existence. And if I ever write a book on serving as, as mayor, there's going to be a lot more than one chapter. But I feel the need to address the, the post office again. I, um, I was, I was with our congressman last night, and we were both shaking our heads over this situation. Saw him again today, and we gave a frustrated chuckle at it, and met with Mayor Peachtree City this morning. They don't have a postmaster. We don't have a postmaster. The, if you look, I, I've asked, I asked staff to kind of give me a, a listing of all of the permit inspection requests and just to kind of track, because we said early on, we, we said to anybody that was involved in the inspection process, we said, "Listen, this has got to be at the top of the list. If you ever get an inquiry about the post, the post office, like them saying they're ready for an inspection, okay, get it through super quick." Normally, we tell people, you know, we've got different people that have to approve different things, so give us two weeks or whatever, whatever the, the timeframe is. Everything has to, if it involves the post office, it's got to be moved to the front. We've done all that. We even told SafeBuild, who, who does our, our inspections. If you get a request for inspection, it needs to be moved up to the front. Everything has to be done quick, because we knew how important it was to our community. And we're not just talking about Tyrone. I get as many complaints from people who live in Peachtree City and Fulton County who are upset about our post office, because they like coming to ours, or used to, like coming to ours over Peachtree City and, and others. And the, the, the fire occurred in March of '23. Think about that. That was 29, does that sound right? 29 months ago? Are you kidding me? That building has been pretty much ready. I've, I've developed a really close relationship with the owner of the building, and I've never seen her before because she lives in California, but we talk all the time. And she laughs at them. I mean, they're paying her rent. The taxpayers have paid rent to that lady for three years without that post office being used, and that is absolutely a posture, whatever the word was I was looking, looking for. That's, that's hideous is what it is. It's, it's incompetent, and it's a waste of taxpayer dollars, and they should be ashamed of themselves. The, the congressman got an answer this week that it would be opening in October. They say that once you get your certificate of occupancy, that it is, that then they have to go through a, they, the postal service has to go through a process where they do their own inspection and outfitting the place for, to, to quote, "be a post office". Well, it seems like that's what you'd be remodeling it for in the first place, is to be what it was. But they say that it will be open in October. Well, I certainly hope so, because they have told us that, I don't know how many times. To give you an idea of how inefficient they have been and incompetent they have been, one time they failed an inspection because there were no signs on the bathroom doors that said "men and women", and it was months before they had, before they went in and asked for another inspection. I would have said, "Hold on, I'm going to see Billy at the hardware store to get two signs. I'll be right back. Can you wait here just a minute?" All right, how in the world do we wait months to get another inspection just because there weren't signs on, on the bathroom doors? Well, they received their certificate of occupancy either the 8th or the 11th of August. And now they're saying to the congressman, not to us, they haven't said anything to us ever. They said to the congressman that they would be in the building in October. That's all I can say, is that that's what they are saying, and they're saying that to somebody who's a lot more important than I am. And I'm sorry that they're so incompetent. I'm sorry that they don't communicate with us, and I'm sorry we don't have a post office that we deserve. But we owe it to you to communicate to you. Just because they don't communicate to us doesn't mean we don't communicate to you. And so I communicate to the citizens of Tyrone first and foremost, but also the, the community as a whole, that we are doing everything we can. And I'm not, I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about we. We are doing everything we can to try to get them to move forward more quickly. And we do apologize to our, to our citizens, but it's hard to keep apologizing for things that we are not responsible for. And so, anybody has any questions?
We are talking 2025, right?
Allegedly, allegedly, yes. I have the email that says, that says that, and this week, they've been focused on dedicating the Peachtree City Post Office to a, a young man who was a resident of Peachtree City that died in, in battle. So, or whatever the proper term is. And so they have, granted, I give them that, they've been focused on, on that. But, uh, I'm sorry, and I don't know what else to do. I have, we had a lady at our last meeting who asked me to get a report of correspondence from our congressman to the postal service. I have asked for that. I've asked for emails, and I've asked for any correspondence that they have had with the United States Postal Service. I've requested that. Asked the district director that question. So if you're listening tonight, I did request that, and, and stay on me. Any other questions?
Did the congressman have any comments concerning why there's no postmaster here or Peachtree City? Or was that a topic of conversation? Or was that a topic of conversation?
That was not as much of a topic of conversation, because I, I don't know, and I don't know if he knows the dynamics of the staffing. Uh, you know, do they, do they now have, because of their kind of reduction in how busy they are, um, do they have a postmaster more for a region, or as opposed to a postmaster for a post office? I, I don't know the, the, uh, the answer to that question. And he was not the one that told me that Peachtree City did not have a postmaster. Somebody else in a, a position of authority told me that. And, um, so it's a s- it's a, just a, a sad state of affairs, and, uh, it's offensive, uh, to use our ta- taxpayer dollars that way. It's, um, it's offensive that they are so incompetent, and, and I feel bad for those that work at the post office who have to, uh, take the criticism, they're the face of, of the post office, take the criticism. I, I don't necessarily blame them, so please don't go down there and scream at them and say that I told you you could. I don't think it's their fault. They don't know either. You can ask them. I ask them every time I go pick up my post off, uh, my, uh, mail, and they say, I don't know. How can somebody working at the Peachtree City Post Office where we send our mail, how can they not know when our post office is gonna open? Um, so, yes, I'm frustrated, too, and, and I know our residents are. I'm sorry. Any else? Yes, can you come forward, please? Sorry. We're already getting in trouble about our, our, uh, microphone. Mr. Swenson.
Flag at the post office, that was absolutely deplorable. Tattered like that.
Thank you. I for- I left that part out, I meant to talk about the flag. So, thank you, you just, you, now, uh, I have to talk to y'all for sixty more seconds. We were getting complaints about the flag. It's not our property. We're not supposed to be on it. Uh, we're not supposed to be going and changing the flags on federal property. Um, but we understand, uh, you know, flying a faded, uh, you know, flag like that, it was tattered and faded, uh, we don't wanna see that either. Uh, so I called the congressman's office about that. And, um, uh, before I talked to the congressman's office, I called a guy at the, he was an area something, and I'm not gonna give his name, because I don't, I just, I'm not in that, but I asked him, what's going on with the post office? His answer was, that's a good question. Kidding me? And I said, well, you know, the least you can do is come change your flag. Well, you know how that flag got changed, Mr. Swenson? Because citizens went and changed the flag, and that's not the way it's supposed to be. That's not the way it's supposed to be. Now, uh, it's, it's just, it's pathetic. And so I, I notified both of our local newspapers tonight, because I want our comments to be in the newspaper. I don't know if they'll catch them, but I want our comments to be in the paper. Anyone else? All right. It's my understanding there is no need for executive session. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.